All right, if everybody's ready, we'll start the first school board meeting of the 2019-2020 school year with our call to order and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary will please note the rule. And I don't see the lights on. Do we have? We do not. Okay, very good. We're supposed to have a special guest board member on the phone, but we haven't made contact with him yet, so we'll go without. Executive session announcements, we have had, we've been busy over the summer, we've had three executive sessions, one on the 30th of July and one on the 8th of August for personnel issues, and we had one just before the meeting this evening, hence our late start, and that was to discuss potential litigation. But now we're ready to get going on our regular session, and we'll start with public comment. Are there any? Nothing received? So I guess we won't start with public comment, we'll go on to approval of the minutes for our meeting from July, or June rather, the 11th.
Okay, we recommend to approve the monthly board action minutes from June 11th, 2019, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we have one abstention. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, and everybody said yes except for one abstention. Six oh one. Yes. Mr. Parker didn't vote either.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion and a second on receiving the accounts for audit. Are there any questions on the accounts? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. All those opposed say no. So, without objection.
I move that we ratify the payments and invoices in the amount of $8,472,807.55 for June 2019 as presented.
I'm gonna give that one to Mr. Dr. Nippert. We have a motion and a second from Dr. Nippert on the granting of the orders for June. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. So, without objection.
I move that we approve the payments and invoices in the amount of $3,242,701.14 for July 2019 as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the invoices for July, in the amount of $3,242,000 and change. Are there any questions on that? I think if you can keep the bills down like this, we can do better on taxes next year. So if you can make an effort along those lines, appreciate that. Okay, if there are no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. So, without objection.
I move that we approve the treasures report for June and July 2019 and presented, as presented, and file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the treasures report? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. So, without objection.
Okay. I'd like to move on to, because we have several discussion items tonight that we wanted to bring forward to our board and have open dialogue, if you will. First one is a GPS location system for our transportation fleet. Several weeks ago, we had the opportunity to share some of that information with you through Mr. Nestor's office. We've had a chance to dialogue via email, to have questions answered, and tonight I would just like to take the opportunity to have Mr. Nestor have just a brief comments to kick it off, and then have the board discuss the potential of this possibility for us with our district buses. Mr. Nestor?
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. This has been on the radar for quite some time in Pott's Grove.
No pun intended, surely.
Exactly. No pun intended. We are one of a very few, number of districts in Montgomery County that do not have GPS tracking on our school buses. And I think, you know, with all the efforts we're putting forth on school security, this is another level of security we can add to our safety of our students by knowing where our buses are at all times, to be able to track them down quickly, whether the driver is able to respond to a phone or not. It also, one of the benefits that we get out of this at this point in time is that the state will no longer honor, allow us to utilize our mapping system to document our mileage for our school buses. So we have a choice of implementing a GPS system which can be quantified, or having our drivers manually track their mileage on a day of each month, kind of a random sample. The problem with that is that whatever day we pick for that random sample may not be the day that benefits us the most from a subsidy standpoint. And two, it's subject to the error level of a bus driver with a bunch of kids behind him yelling and screaming. So we may not get the best information, and it may not be the best for us. This type of system gives us a multiple number of things that can help us manage our drivers and be able to address parent issues as they arise during the school year. It would be, first off, it would give, it would record a minute by minute, may even be second by second, but I don't want to overstate it, minute by minute archived location for the bus. And it will also show, it'll be attached to the stop arm, so then anytime the bus stops and the arm is extended, it'll document that time. So should a parent say, "The bus never stopped for my child today," we can go back to the data and see whether they did. It would also potentially record speeds, so once again, if somebody called with a complaint that the bus was speeding on Route 100, or Route 422, or flying through my neighborhood, instead of going back to the driver and saying, "Hey, where are you?" And they say, "Gee, not me," we can go back and look at the actual data. So it gives us some control that way, gives us the ability to respond real time to parents that say, you know, "Where's my child? They're 15 minutes late." We can say, "They're at the corner of Charlotte and whatever." And it also provides the ability to, should an accident occur or something unforeseen where the bus driver cannot call in to say that something's wrong, we can put monitors on to say that it's been idling for more than five minutes at a location that's not where they should be idling. So there are a variety of levels of benefit we can get out of it, not the least of which is our subsidy calculation, because in that situation, we'll get the data from every day, and we can pick the day of each month that maximizes our subsidy. Right now, we're guessing what that day might be and hoping that we get the right data.
Could you tell the board, like, what kind of money?
Well, we get about a million, million one in subsidy. And it's based on the number with students versus not with students. I can't quantify what, you know, 10 miles might generate, but one thing I say, it can't make us go down, because it can only make us, you know, we can only find days that have more mileage than what we're guessing is the best day. So I can't really quantify if it's gonna be $10,000 or $5,000 a year. It's really, we won't know that until we come up with this and look at what our actual collections are.
In one of our email conversations, you had mentioned the reporting aspect of this for the subsidy, and you had mentioned that there was a product that you were looking for that allows us to generate the reports. Have you quoted that out yet?
That is this product.
That's all inclusive?
It's all included in this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You said we're one of three districts who doesn't have this in the county?
Right.
Is this the latest and greatest model, or is this gonna be outdated soon, or we're gonna get hit again, or what?
Well, we're not looking to get hit again. I also didn't want to go for the Cadillac. This is, this is the, the level of this, the software has, or this program company that we're recommending has multiple levels of programmability of it. We're looking at the basic level at this point, just, we won't see the buses flying across our screen, but we can call them up and find out where they're at at any point in time.
But you don't anticipate it being outdated software?
No.
It's not gonna be outdated software or tracking system very soon, or we're gonna have to?
No, this is, this is their current platform. We can, if we choose to, we can, we can enhance it.
Okay.
To put in more functionality. It can tell us when the engine needs to be, needs oil, or whether it's time for inspection. We can do, it can do all types of different things with, but that's an upgraded. We're looking purely at the base model to do what we think we need to do at this point in time.
One of the advantages that you mentioned for us to run our own buses is that we can run them longer beyond their normal warranty life. Would this added enhancement allow us to extend the life of the buses even further?
I wouldn't think that anything to be programmed in for teammates and things like that, I think we would already be taken care of by CMD, they're pretty good at that, since they operate a garage there, they're on top of that. If we bought the higher end product, would it tell us when something, a spark plug is starting to fail that might cause a problem? Perhaps, but there's a cost for that. That would probably be another $500, $600 a month to get that added information. So they have, they have routine maintenance, they have schedules, they're constantly looking at their vehicles, I think they're doing a pretty good job with that.
Oh, I'm like right next to you, so I'm not really, but the upfront costs are $17,000, $17,184. And you said that the bulk of that is the installation. How much of that is the product itself, roughly? I don't.
The equipment cost is $6,700.
Okay, so basically $10,000 plus, you know, $10,300 for installation. And we're doing, using a third party for this, or is CMD installing this, or who?
The company that we would be buying the system from has authorized installers.
All right. Have we looked at any others? Because I realize, I looked at GeoTab, and they don't, you don't buy direct from them, you go through different retailers. So have we looked at any other retailers for the product? And the reason I'm asking is because they make a really strong point about the fact that the installation takes almost no time at all, and I looked through their documentation, and the main part of the installation is a, I don't know if it was like 13 pin, but basically you have a little fee that you plug in, and then because we have the arm, there's a harness, which basically is this giant cable that we have to then stretch over, you know, zip tie it in, and then plug it in at that end, and that's the installation. So I'm having a hard time with $11,000, you know, 200 bucks, not quite 200 bucks.
It's $99 a year.
$99?
No. I just calculated it out, it's like $180.
Yeah, as I say, it should be just a little under $200.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, it's $99 is what they're doing.
But if it's 53, then?
Just hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So the bus stop sensor is $99. The GeoTab hardware itself is $89. So it's $185.
For the installation?
Right.
So again, are we able to look at other retailers? Because, I mean, like I said, if you go to the GeoTab, you can go through the documentation, and it's, I mean, allowing for the zip ties and everything, it's about a five to 10-minute process to do the install.
Is that what they're saying?
From, I'm actually from watching videos of the installation and also reading the documentation, I didn't speak to anybody there, so.
I can look into that.
Okay. I just, because, I mean, it's very possible that this place is, you know, making their money that way, so.
I think this retailer is, this is, this is a state contract, that's a New Jersey state contract, but it's a state contract that we can piggyback on. But I can, I can make that as inquiries and find out if there's, we may be locked into this vendor because of region, I don't know.
Yeah, except their point was just like, that everything they sell is, can be, you know, put on while the buses are, you know, done for the night, you know, it doesn't take anything, that's like one of their claim of fame's is that, so that's why, okay.
I will certainly look into that.
So is this the only vendor that was researched?
No. This was the most cost effective vendor.
But you just said that we might be locked in to this one because?
We looked at different systems. So we looked at another, another product, we got a quote on this product called ZERNAR. We looked at software, at systems that would communicate with our routing software, so we wouldn't have to build new maps for everything and get through a lot of additional administration on the front end. So we picked out ones that we could, that could work well with our transportation routing system. We identified three systems, one that chose not to participate. So we looked at two vendors. The ZERNAR price was about $24,000. So we went with the more cost effective option.
I also wanted to piggyback off the gem here. My husband's company uses GPS tracking in their delivery trucks, and they deliver all over, all over the place. And they actually, one of their locations actually installs the GPS systems, and he said it takes 30 seconds, you know, plug it in. So, and I understand, there's a control arm here, I get that, but again, $178 or $185 for two minutes worth of time? I'd like that job. That, you're making some good money off that.
I don't have any, I don't have any direct knowledge of how long it takes to install.
Well, I'm just telling you, my husband does, and he's actually getting more information on it for me within the next couple of days. He doesn't directly work with the person who installs them. But who's monitoring this GPS? I mean, if we're, if we're getting all this information, who's, where does it go?
Well, all the information's archived, it's a software platform, so we can go back to last week, last month, last year, and look up information.
But what if it's right now?
But if it's right now, it'll be available to CMD, since they're in charge of the drivers, and it'll be available to me and/or whoever I want to, we want to give access to in the, in the district office.
So what if you're not, I mean, you obviously need your computer with you, correct? You have to monitor it through a computer, I would assume?
Right.
So if, you know, I guess I just don't understand why, number one, okay, this is the newest thing, I get it, you know, everybody needs to know where everybody is, we all do, somebody knows where we all are at all times if we have a cell phone. Two, why is this, you said this has been on the radar, but now it's sort of an emergency? We, suddenly we have to?
It is not an emergency.
Well, you stated though that we needed to, you wanted us to make the decision soon before the buses were sent out for the kids because of installation.
If we were going to do this, it would make sense to do it before the kids are back, so that they had access to do it. It's not an emergency. What makes it more palatable at this point in time is that it will further improve our subsidy revenues.
Well, here's the thing. We're gonna cut the discussion short at this time, because it's $17,000, and we're spending a lot of time on this for not a good reason. Here's the, here's the thing, and the reason we've talked about it this long so far. The basic thing that got me going on this, and I'll say that I haven't sent you any emails on this whatsoever to this point, the auditor general no longer accepts documentation from the routing software. That's my number one question. Why not? What's wrong with our routing software? I don't actually want to answer that question. That seems to be the fundamental problem. Why won't he accept our routing software? What's wrong with our routing software? Margers Mill Road runs from here to there, the length hasn't changed. Why the auditor general won't accept the fact that Margers Mill Road runs from here to there, it's no longer the same distance that it has always been for 184 years, I don't know, okay? Congratulations, the auditor general, for not trusting our length of road. Great. And now apparently, the computer can't calculate the distance correctly anymore. Terrific. If we need a new routing software, that's a separate question than the GPS. And we've got this GPS, and it's, and the other thing that gets me is, we've got the monthly fee of $571. That's great, and I see the length of the contract is two years. I've done this before on cell phones. I get an introductory price that's, you know, $10 a month for two years, and that's great, and then at the end of two years, or sooner if I miss a payment, it goes up to $200 a month, or something exorbitant. You know, what's the kicker here? And these are the kinds of questions we want, and I get that it's a discussion item, and we can come back to this, and it's not a big deal, and we'd like to do that kind of thing. So what I'm suggesting is, we'll revisit this next time, we'll talk about it, and we'll give you a chance to have some additional information on all that stuff, and thanks very much for giving us this, and it's, yes, it's a good idea, and we do want to do this, we want to move forward with something, but we'll look at it in some more detail, and we'll give you a chance to come back with some more thoughts, right?
Yeah, great.
Okay, so let's move on to the next thing, which I, sad to tell you, isn't getting any better. So let's talk about the next thing.
The next thing, and just a real quick statement, you know, to the board, when I had a conversation with both Mr. Nestor and Dr. Harney, you know, and Mr. Boyer, is that these, these issues and discussions come up, and I think you know me well enough by now that we're not, we haven't rammed anything down, but there's not must dos, but when information comes up during the summer with my staff, it's important that I lend a ear, and I make a decision on the value, and I want them to write about it, so you have a chance to read about it, and then I want a chance to discuss it. So we'll continue down that path, and I think as we move forward on anything, and then when we feel comfortable, we'll bring it, we'll bring it to the board for a vote. So I feel that has been to our advantage over the last three years to have these types of, I always say, professional collaboration, if you will, to discuss it. So I appreciate you lending our ear and giving us time and asking the questions, and we'll continue to, you know, work through these processes with writing, conversation, and eventually down to a vote or vote. So the next topic, if you will, was again, was brought to discussion and brought to my attention, you know, in several meetings this summer, and really before I felt comfortable with having Mr. Boyer, you know, put some things in writing, information in writing, I wanted to basically have more insight to the why in this situation. So today, I'd like, tonight I'd like to have just, you know, Mr. Boyer come up and just sit in the cold seat, and Dr. Harney as well is going to do a little bit of intro about why, why this is something that they are recommending at this time, and have discussion tonight, and we'll move forward from there. Dr. Harney?
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Basically, this topic came to my attention maybe sometime in the springtime talking to Mr. Boyer. Life changed for us as a district and for the middle school dramatically on the 17th of January of this year, when Safe to Say started. It has completely dominated some days and some weeks for some of our administrators. We had some very serious issues that needed to be dealt with, that only the building principals really needed to be able to do. We really couldn't give them much assistance here at the district office. It was all driven by pupil concerns for pupils, very serious situations with pupils that needed to be addressed, and working with their families. We had 45 incidents of Safe to Say that reached a level, or their level of seriousness, where they were calling us in the night, or calling us during the day. Those are the life-threatening type situations. The majority of those came from the middle school. So when we talked a little bit in some of the communication to the board about the increased mental health needs at the middle school, that is, was primarily what we were talking about. We also have received information from Safe to Say that draws the same conclusion, I just wanted to kind of bring that to the board's attention too, because as I said, life changed for us in January, and it changed for a lot of school district. So this was one of the conclusions from the Safe to Say group that said, "The majority of tips received from Safe to Say have not been about students making violent threats to their school or to their classmates. Instead, they've been focused on the students struggling with mental health issues." But it's real, and it is somewhat of an epidemic throughout the state of Pennsylvania and throughout the country. So where it has manifested itself here has really been quite a bit at the middle school. We went through some data a while ago while we were looking for the addition of the crisis council to be split between the high school and the middle school, and that was another manifestation of what's been taking place and the needs that we were seeing for our students. So when Mr. Boyer approached us with concerns about the amount of time that he and Mr. Kirby need to spend in the cafeteria to maintain the environment that they worked so hard to achieve, we tried to come up with some solutions to lend some support to the middle school. We had a meeting with the association at the middle school. We were trying to find a way to maybe switch some duties for people, to create a duty at lunch versus what they were doing, and trying to find ways to step it that way on a volunteer level and on duty level. There's some contractual limitations there. We were unable to put together a schedule that worked, and this was the next solution that we could think of, was to try to see how we could get teachers in that cafeteria and allow Mr. Boyer and Mr. Kirby to deal with the increasing needs that were there in the middle school. So that's my long-winded introduction, but I'll let Mr. So that's my long-winded introduction, but I'll let Mr. Boyer take over from there, but that was my involvement, how I got involved, and why I, I believe, um, some assistance is warranted.
Good evening, I'm communicated through email, I guess, with the majority of you, but, um, you know, willing to answer any of your questions, I, I think when I brought this to Dr. Harney and Dr. Shirk, we invested a lot of time in the cafeteria over the past two years, I think we're in a really good spot, you know, it's a positive place where the kids can socialize. Structures and procedures that were put in there, you know, work very well with myself and Mr. Kirby kind of, um, you know, supervising and running all th- you know, all three lunch zones, and, you know, I know there's, um, a couple people that have actually been in the cafeteria, but, Dr. Harney said, um, the need to be in other places in the building right around January just started to ramp up, and our presence in the cafeteria, all three lunch zones, becomes very hard. Um, and then, you know, my fear is if we're not in there, or if we don't have some staff, professional staff leadership in there, and turn it over to, you know, the duty aides, we kinda go back to, you know, an environment that I don't feel is, is positive.
Yeah.
I, I was just curious, um, were they mainly like, like sixth, seventh, or eighth graders, like are they gonna keep coming up? You know, like if there were sixth graders, it's gonna be seventh grade, that was the majority, of what age, what grade, I should say?
Talking about the increased concerns? Well, the, the, the concerns also increased at the high school, but they were magnified, I think, at the middle school. And I think it is an adolescent phenomenon too, that when you read some of the statistics, it, it is, it's definitely manifesting itself at the high school, but the middle school-aged child is one who has been the most affected, um, in our district. The high school has, believe me, has had their share as well. I'll, I'll say one point that maybe we didn't clarify for the group, that, um, we have duty aides that do work our cafeterias. Duty aides do a good job in maintaining safety, they, you know, they're there, they keep an eye on things, but they do not, and, and just cannot have the authority that a professional staff or an administrator has. Um, there was a question about training, we talked about it today in, in our retreat. It came down to the fact that we just can't train authority, and the kids, and you can see it starting at lower, working its way up, the kids know who the power players are, so to speak, and there is a difference in how much they will listen to a professional staff, or an administrator, or a duty aide, and that's no disrespect to the duty aide, but they know that they are not a teacher, they're not an administrator. So, the presence of the teacher was our next phase in trying to get, keep the authority in the cafeteria, and keep the cafeteria the positive place it is, while allowing the building administration to do other very important work.
Just to clarify, we, we have tried it with duty aides, um, walking the beat, so to speak, in the lunchroom with, without you there, or I wasn't quite sure if you had tried it, or if you've just discussed it and hadn't tried it, so.
We have tried it, so to speak, when, you know, we have to leave the cafeteria for whatever reason. You know, and coming back in and having to kinda curtail, you know, what went on when we weren't in there. If we kinda extend that to, you know, whole lunch zones, then, you know, we, I think we would have a bigger problem.
I mean, I do understand with a number of the duty aides, they are actually, you know, the mothers of some of the friends of the people in the school, cause I know, you know, talking to my kids, like, oh, that's so-and-so's, you know, mom, that's so-and-so's daddy, and I mean, and I guess that does make it a little bit harder. But, um, I'm just wondering if you, if you have, if the students know that you have the authority there in the lunchroom, if you were to step back in the, but still be in lunchroom, and have a specific duty aide, or one of two duty aides walk through and, you know, act with authority, and the students see that you are backing them up and following, you know, whatever they say, do you think that might help as a way if we can't find teachers?
I mean, it could help, you know, I, I, I don't know, I think what we were, you know, leading the process in the cafeteria is more, you know, leans towards a professional staff, I don't, you know, I, correct me if I'm wrong, like, I don't know if you're asking that put them in charge of some of the things that myself and Mr. Kirby did in the caf-
I'm sorry, was I just saying, is that, that, you were saying that when you are walking in the cafeteria, the other students saw you and realized, okay, we have to behave because you have the authority to do something. But if we had, you know, one or two duty aides, that it was obvious to the students that you backed them up with, they, you know, this duty aide said, no, you have to do this or that, and they saw that you were backing them, or Mr. Kirby were backing them up, just as a possibility. I mean, I do understand the teachers would be more effective, um, growing up, you know, with DOJ, and that's where we always had teachers going through, and then whenever things were bad, then there would be a principal in there. Um, but I understand, like, with our contract, we can't do that without having a, a separate item, so, we, if we don't have any teachers, as I understand right now, no teacher's been spoken to, so, do we know if we even have any that are willing to give up their lunch, you know, or walk around eating while they're, you know, hopefully not spreading their food out of their mouth while they're trying to tell kids to sit down, so.
I, I don't know, we haven't talked to anybody yet about it, you know, we would have to actually see, you know, who would be willing to volunteer to do it.
And we wanted to approach the board first with the concept before we opened it up to, you know, this is our first conversation with this, Dr. Shirk says we bring things to the board for conversation. So, we weren't intending to try to get approval this evening, we wanted to have time to, to share our thoughts on it, entertain any questions, and we had, we just haven't taken it to that level yet, because we wanted, didn't wanna do that until we got to a point where we thought we would have board support, because we didn't wanna start a process that was not going to, uh, come to fruition.
I, I think, and appreciate that very much. Um, I guess, to me, it comes back down to, what we're saying is that we have students that are not showing respect to adults in the building, and I sort of feel like whether they were an aide, a principal, a guest, they should be showing respect to them, and I, I just sort of feel like we're failing them by not doing that, so. I, I'm not quite sure how to do that exactly, that, cause there will be some that will never learn, I understand that. But, I, I just feel like, that's what it comes down to, is that they should have respect for these, they should have respect for you, but they should also have respect for the other, other adults, as adults and human beings, and their fellow students, I just, so.
That's along the lines, what I was thinking is, you know, it seems like we're trying to sort of throw more, like, muscle at this problem, um, when it seems like the muscle that needs to be used is this one. You know, my kids have fairly recently gone through this same school system. There were never any problems, I mean, the occasional, you know, they would come home every once in a while. I mean, I remember when my son was, I think in eighth grade, there was some big food fight on the last day of school. That was all planned through social media, which at the time was sort of in its infancy, and so it was a big deal. But, um, that was the worst thing that happened. And so, why are we seeing these problems, starting in the elementary school? I hear it from the elementary school teachers saying, you know, the incoming sixth grade class is gonna be tough because of this and this and this. Why? What, number one, why is it growing in the elementary school and then rearing its ugly head in the middle school? It doesn't seem right to me, as Jim said, respect adults, period. I'm sorry, it's not that hard. Um, and somehow, the kids either aren't learning it, they're, they're not being taught it at home, they're not being taught it at school. I don't know where it's, where we're failing, or not even necessarily us, where they are being failed. But now it's supposed to cost us a bunch of money and teachers' time, and, I'm sorry, I, I, if someone could explain it to me, why suddenly behavior is so bad? When, as of, you know, six years ago, it really wasn't that bad. It was, lunch was fun and social, and it's something the kids looked forward to. They were allowed to sit wherever they wanted to, they could talk with their friends, they could go sit outside. It was a good time, it was a time to blow off some steam, and, and catch up with your friends, and now it does not appear to be that way anymore. And I wanna know why, what's going on?
I don't, I don't-
Go ahead.
We don't have any problems in the cafeteria, the, the kids are, I mean, they do a good job in there. I think that, you know, one of the reasons why they do a good job is that, um, you know, we have two principals in there that are leading the process. I don't think the duty aides can lead that same process, our professional staff, I know can, cause they do it in other places. Um, you know, in all fairness, you know, the kids have done a really good job over the past two years that I've been there. Um, and, you know, I, I think the cafeteria, you know, some of the kids will, you know, wanna eat outside. I mean, they're free to really do most of the things that they've always done in the past, yes, there is seating arrangements and things in there, but, um, I, I just, without myself or Mr. Kirby, or, you know, a figure that they connect with during their seven and a half hours a day, I, I don't think the process can continue the same way, unless we would stay in there.
You both sort of danced around a question that's been going through my mind. Are we talking about a problem associated with a particular age? Or are we talking about a problem that's associated with a particular cohort that's moving through the school? Is it a particular group of bad kids who are causing a problem? Or is it just the fact that we've got thirteen-year-olds acting like thirteen-year-olds?
No, I don't think we have bad kids at all, I think we have an age group and a large group of thirteen-year-olds in a large space that we need to make sure they're safe, and are enjoying their lunch experience, and, but they need supervision, and they need, that's, that is what Mr. Boyer and Mr. Kirby are there, they're, they're monitoring the situation, and there are systems in place to make sure they're kept safe to the point where they can enjoy themselves. It's not a certain group, it's, it's the need of that age, and the fact that it was fine before has just really changed because of the needs of our administrators now dealing with additional things that have been placed upon them, a- and I, I don't wanna keep going back, but it, life changed in January, it just, it just did significantly. So, they need to be other places, and the concern is that the work that's been done to create that positive environment in the cafeteria might not maintain without the strong authority that oversees it. Uh, you, you, how many kids are in the cafeteria at one time?
A whole, well, you have a whole class, so, anywhere between, I guess, around two fifty at a time.
So maintaining two hundred and fifty adolescents is not an easy thing. It's not overly difficult, they're not the most misbehaved kids, but it's not the easiest thing to do, and you need some authority figures to be able to do that.
Uh, just, just to interject, um, some, some thoughts, and, one, one of the things that I'd, I'd like to, 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 to say is that it i- it is an opportunity for our kids to, to unwind and socialize. And someone who was, um, in cafeteria duty for twelve years as a teacher, that was a duty assigned, I understand the role very, very fondly and closely, and I knew that why I was there, and I was there to keep law and order and respect. Um, and that's what I, that's what I did, in, in a proactive way, um, along the way, uh, as a preventative person, as an assistant principal. Um, I was in, uh, a cafeteria every day for eight years, and as a principal, I was, I was there as well. Here's, here's the, here's some of the things you need to think about. I never got anything done instructionally with my school as an assistant principal when I had between an hour and a half and two hours of lunch duty. My world stopped. As a principal, I would rotate around with, with my assistants, so that all of our worlds wouldn't stop. So, we covered for one another, but we still had to be there with the presence. Mr. Boyer is not, and Mr. Kirby, is not asking for, to get out of the duty. What they're asking for is the ability to spend two hours of their day other places than in the cafeteria. So, if, if the board's okay with that piece, how many, I look at it, how many teachers cannot be observed between eleven and one? A lot. So that's not only for Mr. Boyer or Mr. Kirby. So, um, we tried to work through the collective bargaining agreement, it's not in there. Just, s- sorry, that's something we gotta look at, for the duty, as, as moving forward with collective bargaining. But, what we're asking for is, is to, to have the ability to have, um, an authority figure in there to help out when needed. Uh, we're also, I'm gonna add this, that happens at the high school, is the SRO needs to be more of a presence in the cafeteria. Sometimes, they are, and sometimes they're not, at the middle school. So we're gonna work with the acting chief to make that more of a presence as an authority figure. But, um, before Mr. Boyer, you know, took over, um, and I think he shared with the board the stats, we had a lot of, a lot of discipline referrals during our lunchtime. And I got a lot of calls as superintendent during that time as well. So what we need to do, like we do all the time, really in our businesses, if something's not working, or something needs fixed, or, we put structures in place. So, we felt, that, that was actually a directive from me to Mr. Boyer, that you need to put structures in place, so that this can be a place where kids can go and be safe and eat, and socialize with their friends, and you know, um, kids want structure, kids want discipline, and then once they have that, then they go, they learn how to play within the rules, and it, they, they move themselves out of that. And that's really what's occurred at, at the middle school, it's occurred, um, there, um, the fir- the first half year and last year. And I have been at middle schools through, through, through the, through the years, and I've been in cafeterias that are to- so unruly, that it's, it's, it's embarrassing. And, that's not what we have, that's not what we have at, at Podge Grove Middle School. So, we do have a solution, the solution is that our administrators continue to do what they do, and unfortunately, they're not gonna be able to do certain pieces of their, their job as principals, because-
They're tied up for a length of time.
So, the thought was, how can we free that up if necessary, to have an observation, to have an IEP meeting, to have a Safe to Say conversation with the counselor, crisis counselor? So, uh, and you know what? I, I held off on it as long as I thought I could, to be honest with you. And I even had a conversation with both gentlemen, like, why wasn't this conversation brought to me, you know, during budget time? And I guess they, they both really thought they could work it out within the system that we had in place. And finally, they said to me, Bill, I, 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 we can't do that piece anymore unless we continue to be in there as administrators, so. Um, you know, as, as a superintendent, as the ultimate instructional leader, uh, I would like to see my building administrators spend less, more time doing instructional things, being in classrooms, working with teams, especially at the middle school, having IEP meetings during the day, and make that more productive time. I know that because I experienced it, I could never schedule an IEP meeting between eleven and one, I was never available. Uh, and we had to kick that after school, and sometimes parents aren't, it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a domino of pieces, so. Um, I don't, I just want you to think about it, really, the things that we talked about tonight, continue to ask us questions. Um, and you know, uh, Mrs. Kashi made a point about the, the why. You know, we, you know, I think, I think, as, schools are a place, we're so, we're schools and we're social agencies. So we, we have kids coming to us at very different levels of, of household needs and wants, and whenever they come to school that day, is we have to be ready to, to, to be the, be the parent, be the mother, be the father, be the disciplinarian, be the example setter, give them structure they might not have, uh, during the day, so I think some of it is a microcosm of our societies, I've grown through, through, through this, this, this time in my career, so, uh- So, um, we just have to try to stay maybe a half a step ahead. I only, I don't think we'll ever be a full step ahead. But, um, our intentions are just to really reach out to you, give it some thought, and, um, uh, see, uh, see, see if this is an area that, that, that we could pursue. Um, and, you know, and, and just give it, give it a shot. I mean, we're not asking, I mean, it's not like, you know, some, I always look at this, just the flip side of all this is that some middle schools of our size have three principals, not two. They have three, or they have two and a dean of students where they have more people involved in the discipline or more people involved in the supervision piece. So, um, financially, the piece of, I think it was not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars. Um, I thought that originally, uh, it was a, it was a decent bang for the buck and it really maintained the stability of what we've already done. So, I'm a little hoarse cuz I talked all day at administrative retreat, so I apologize for that. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks very much, everybody, for, for the conversation, I do appreciate it. Um, I guess I'm just gonna try and do a very quick wrap-up, I promise, very quick. Um, getting back to the why, uh, we talk about how things have changed and how things, you know, where we are. We talked earlier about how Pots Grove is kind of the glue that holds everything together, you know, the, the school district and the administration, how we're kind of the, the glue that holds the community together in, in our case. Um, and that's true, some of the old structures and some of the old things are not there anymore that used to be, uh, that maybe gave some grounding to uh, the folks in the community, and that's true. And things are changing, lots of things are changing. Uh, our politics are changing, how people talk to each other. Um, how people show respect or don't show respect to each other is changing. I continue to expect and demand that we here in Pots Grove, our administration, our school board, our staff, that we set the example. We will continue to treat each other with respect. We will continue to treat our students with respect, our citizens, everybody who comes here before this board with respect. And we will give respect. We will demand that we give and receive respect. We'll do our best to maintain civility and decency so that all people know that this is how good people behave. And we'll try and teach that and give that to our students because that is a gift that we can give them. And we'll struggle and make mistakes and we'll fall short sometimes. But we're gonna keep on working, we're gonna keep working to that end. Okay? That's our goal. Because you have to have goals and you have to work for them. And we're gonna have discussions about what's the best way to meet that goal and what we're gonna do. And we're gonna have disagreements, but we're gonna solve them civilly. And we're gonna make decisions and we're gonna work on them. And if it doesn't quite work out, then we'll find another tack and we'll go after it. And we'll keep working. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer, Dr. Arnie, and the board, thank you. Action items for personnel, um.
I'd like to make a motion if I could, to approve all action items.
Accept. Okay.
And this is the speed round of our meeting.
Accept. Um, nine point nine miscellaneous employee compensation. That, that is gonna be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll take that out.
If you would, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve action items personnel nine-one, taking out nine-nine.
Okay. So all, all the action items, nine except nine-nine, okay, just one.
We have a motion and second to approve items nine-one to nine-eleven with the exception of nine-eighty.
None, correct. Okay, we have a motion and second, anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. No, no questions.
Do you have a comment?
I do.
Yes.
Yes. I would, uh, like to congratulate our new Pots Grove music, uh, department. I had a chance and we were all invited to go meet our new, um, chorus director and our first female band director. And if you get a chance, go meet them, they are fantastic. So I just wanna congratulate them, I welcome them, and, um, we got some good girls coming.
All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Mr. Lindgren, can I make a mention on some of the hires?
I would like that very much, please.
About the hiring process? Um, one of the things that, that, that you do very gracefully is give Dr. Shirk the power to hire over the summer. And what that does for us, it allows us to hire and then those folks can then put in their letters of resignation so we can get these people on board. Uh, Dr. Shirk, I don't know how many times it, we would meet with the final candidate and then walk out the door and we'd look at each other and go, wow. So we're just, it's been a great season. Um, I think we've hired a lot of wonderful people and I'm looking forward to everyone here meeting a lot of our new staff. It's been, it's been a really great summer, so I just felt the need to, to say that because we have, um, really been impressed by a lot of the folks that have uh, come to join our, our Pots, uh, Grove family, so I just wanted to, felt the need to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arnie. Moving on to action items for business, uh, settlement agreement for one student. We're asking the board to approve a confidential agreement for one student as presented.
Some move.
Don't we have to vote on nine-nine?
Tabled, it was tabled.
Oh, tabled, oh, gotcha, okay. Sorry.
We have a motion on ten-one, do we have a second? We have a second on ten, ten-one, a motion and a second? You can't make a second motion, you're just way out of order. We have a motion and a second on ten-one, uh, does anybody have any questions? If not, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed say no? All right, so order.
Moving on to ten point two, contracted services for U.S. medical staffing. We recommend the contract of U.S. medical staffing to staff one-to-one aids, nursing services, and psychological services as needed.
We have a motion and a second on item ten point two, does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? So order without objection.
Moving on to ten point three, a memorandum of understanding between the Pots Grove School District and Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. We're asking the board to approve an MOU with Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services for prevention services within the district building as outlined.
We have a motion and a second to approve item ten point three. I'm sorry, Ms. Cushey, you still need me to tell you who's moving and seconding or you got that covered?
Yeah.
You're good, okay. We have a motion and a second on item ten point three, um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I was curious, for the grant of five hundred thousand dollars, do we get a say in how it, you know, what part it's spent on, you know, how it's broken out over the three years and in what areas that are covered here? Or is that sort of dictated to us or it gets brought, what's the process, I was just curious?
Yeah, there, and I, I'm gonna have Ms. Pacito, uh, chime in if she, if she may, but uh, outlined, uh, in the, in the area below, uh, the grant has four main initiatives and provisions for training for teachers in violence prevention programs, training for teachers in area of management techniques aimed to teach pro-social behaviors and prevent aggressive behaviors in students, train school personnel and recognize crisis, uh, strengthen understanding of outside supports, utilize county networks. So, this really is a great piggyback for us with this trauma-informed. So, you'll, you'll see, uh, goals from the superintendent, as well as goals from our directors, as well as goals from our building principals. And this will be, uh, a foundational piece for us to help our teachers, uh, have the tools and skills that they need, you know, over the next three years. So, um, Ms. Pacito, feel, feel free to add more, but it, we're really excited about and Kate had a lot, a lot to do with it.
Hi, everyone. I think Dr. Shirk did a nice job summing it up. But really, the, the Montgomery County, uh, Department of Health and Human Services has outlined some options for us, a menu of choices. So one of the things that, um, we'll be engaging with when our teachers return, teachers, staff, duty aides, uh, classroom assistants. Um, we're, the Deveraux Center for Effective Schools, uh, their behavior, behaviorists are going to be coming in and doing a follow-up staff training for our staff. Um, a, a really nice follow-up from what we engaged in last year with our trauma-informed piece, really, um, bringing some things to life from class, classroom strategies for all of our professional and paraprofessional staff. Uh, so that's the first thing that we'll be doing. But to answer your question, do we have full leverage to decide how the monies are spent? No, we have a menu of offerings, yeah.
Is it a large menu or is it like?
Um, it's a, it, it's a menu that meets our needs, yes.
It's free five hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna meet somebody's needs.
It's going to meet our needs, thank you, sir.
So we need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion?
The motion is second, we just need to.
Oh, great, even better.
So that was the comment, so are there any other comments? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Uh, ten point four, an independent contract agreement for school psychological services. Um, as I turn my page, uh, we recommend the authorization of contracted school psychological services as needed with a certified school psychologist, Chris Kandrego. Uh, initial evaluations are to be billed at a rate of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per valuation and reevaluations will be billed at eight hundred and fifty per evaluation as presented.
Some move, second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any questions or comments?
Actually, I do, but maybe the chief separate is something you want. Under ten-four, we're talking about initial evaluation of nine seventy-five. Nine seventy-five and eight fifty per valuation. Under ten-two, we had psycho- psychologists' initial evaluation of twelve hundred and seven fifty, those are two separate things? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Ten point five, the high school roof repair.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ten point five, high school roof repair team.
Just gonna let that founder there, if you grab a second, okay, we have a second, thank you very much. Ten-five, we have a motion and a second, do anybody have any comments on the roof repair? Change order, sixty-five hundred dollars going once, going twice? Okay, no questions, no comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Ten point six, budget transfer.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ten point six, budget transfers.
We have a motion and a second on ten point six to approve the budget transfers. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Reports.
See, I wanted to get to the JOC report.
That's really what this was all about, that's really what this was all about. She didn't care about your voice.
Um, things are banging there, we had our meeting on August fifth. Uh, student enrollment is six hundred and forty-five, which is amazing because when I first started, we were in the four hundreds. So it just shows with the, how the growth that we have over there. Um, pretty much the meeting, we wrapped up all, all of our summer. Um, we had, um, successful summer camps. Um, and pretty much we approved all the personnel additions and changes. Uh, we approved the cosmetology extended school day program. On Thursdays, mark your calendars, on Thursdays, two to seven P.M. This will be from September first to May twenty-twenty. And remember, the kids need the hours, it's a win-win. Uh, we did approve the student handbook, uh, for school year two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty. And we are very excited to begin metal tech. We're gonna work out all the problems and concerns that we might have there. And the goal is to offer advanced welding in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. So, um, things are going really good there.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm. Uh, moving on to, uh, committee items, number twelve. Uh, we're asking the board to approve the curriculum integration technology committee, uh, minutes that were submitted on May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion and a second to approve the committee meeting minutes from May twenty-eighth. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments on them? If not, all those in favor, uh, in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed say no? So order without objection.
Twelve point two, the athletics co-curriculum and community relations meeting. We're asking the board to accept the minutes, uh, for that, uh, committee. And that, that, that meeting was held on June eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as submitted.
We have a motion and a second on the meeting of June eleventh, uh, any questions or comments on that meeting? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Very good. And one abstention.
Okay, policy committee, um.
I make a motion that we approve twelve point three, policy committee?
Actually, it's just a report. I was just wondering if anybody wanted to report out. Uh, Mr. Parker's not here, or would you like to have that? Have that go, uh, till next time?
We'll push that.
We'll push that? Okay, we'll mo- we'll move that, we'll move that. We'll, we'll table that.
Bring it back.
And bring it back. Mr. Lindgren, new business.
New business, we'll just, we'll just see, you've, you've had all summer to think about it, to tee up some new items?
Still, I'm still thinking.
Well, time's up. Public comment, we're moving on to public comment.
I have two things I wanted to mention.
Oh, dear.
Yes. So, there is.
There's always somebody who's just.
So first and foremost, we talked earlier about the middle school and the, and the needs and the changing, um, needs of the district. And, uh, what I appreciate is the groundwork that we're improving upon and strengthening at our elementary school level. And I'm hopeful that because of the work of the student services team led by Mrs. Pacito, the building principals who just love on these kids so much, uh, that over time we'll see this, um, like a positive change as the kids move up through the ranks um, because of the new and innovative ways and the additional supports, um, that, that the district is putting in place. And so I wanna thank everybody, uh, for their work in that regard. And then second, Brenna, you just, I have to, like, draw you into the meeting here. So, coming into senior year, first of all, congratulations, very exciting stuff. How will you, will you do the job differently coming in? Are there things you've learned that you can improve upon coming into this last year as student board rep?
Uh, first, I'm sorry, I just cut my wisdom teeth out, so I've got a little bit of a list. Um, something that I'd like to do differently is I'd like to meet with the kids more. We try to do it every month, but, you know, once you get wrapped up in school, you've got too, so many things going on, you just, you lose time. So something that I'd like to do is I'd try to actually like to go every month and actually talk to, talk to kids and different groups of kids cuz sometimes we would go places and they would only give us fifth graders, they would only give us eighth graders, they would only give us second graders. I wanna hear from all of them, I wanna hear from, you know, everyone that's in that school, not just, um, you know, one specific variety of kids. So that's something that I'd like to do a little bit differently this year.
That sounds great, I wanna thank you for doing the job and also for, uh, talking after wisdom tooth surgery, so, thanks for that. Totally forgot about the surgery, would not have done that, dear. I apologize.
You see, I'm, I'm twisted, if, if I had known she had wisdom teeth, I'd have been calling on her all night. Because that's just how I am. So there's that. Um, Mr. Lindgren, could I throw one thing out there? This is a thirty-second one at most. Uh, we've been putting forth a lot of effort on wellness over the last year and we're starting kicking off our wellness committees, uh, on September twelfth at four P.M. And we'd love to have a board member to join us at these meetings.
What kind of day is it?
Four o'clock. This is on September twelfth, this is our first.
This is our first meeting. We don't have the schedule, uh, set up for the rest of the year. The twelfth should be a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
It's possible. I'm available.
So...
Who wanna bring the...
The wellness committee. Yeah, good plan.
I think not to overwhelm the staff, one would be great. Uh, it's gonna be here at the district office. If you're, if you're interested, let me know and...
Maybe future.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. We'll have a five K run to figure out who's gonna... Figure out who's gonna represent the board. And I'll, I'll judge. I will not participate. Whoever finishes. It's a simple, it's a simple criteria. It's, it's all it is. Um, so now we're coming, I'm assuming there's nobody, nobody else who's gonna try?
No.
For new business? Um, we're coming to public comment. Anybody else care to step up? So at this point, I'll take a motion for adjournment? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Very good, thank you for going.